Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Logan Scholl Walter, our sign language interpreter. The following legislation, the following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Cockhill presents Bill 730. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Mulberry Way be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 417.06 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill 731. Resolution granting unto the Brashear Association their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new subsurface water meter vault for new domestic and fire service at 314 Brownsville Road in the 30th Ward, 3rd Council District of the City of Pittsburgh. Councilman Bruce A. Kraus presents Bill 732. Resolution providing for a professional service agreement with Big Picture Lab LLC for video production services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Of the total cost, $12,500 will come from the HUD Trust Fund and $12,500 will come from the Commission's Community Development Block Grant Funding. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill 733. Resolution amending Resolution 838 of 2019, which authorized the Mayor and the Chief Equity Officer to execute relevant agreements with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city of Pittsburgh by adding four additional years and increasing funding to offer the service through 2023 at a cost not to exceed $150,000. Bill 734. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement or agreements with Allegheny County Bar Association to provide legal advertising to the city of Pittsburgh for performing state mandated advertising of treasurer sales. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill 735. Resolution amending Resolution 246 of 2020, which had previously amended Resolution Number 493 of 2019 and Resolution 133 of 2018, authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city of Pittsburgh into a third amended professional services agreement or agreements with Johnson Controls for continued security camera integration and support services at a cost of $587,400, extending such agreements for one year and increasing the overall agreement compensation to $5,690,002. This has concluded the reading for today, Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Regular Meeting for Tuesday, September 22nd. Meeting announcements. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. until further notice. All meetings will be live streamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Cockhill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Here.
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 Have the members present.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain for a moment of silence. And we'd like to do a moment of silence for Mrs. Costa, the mother of Senator Costa and the Costa family, Guy Costa, who worked for the city of Pittsburgh. We'd like to do a moment of silence for her and also keep in mind Ruth Gator Ginsburg and I believe Controller Lamb had lost either a mother or a grandmother this, this.
Mom.
This mom, this, okay, I didn't realize it was mom this past week. So please keep them all in mind, but I would like to, I'll give members a moment to say something about Mrs. Costa after we, after we make, after we do the moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and then I'm just going to ask members if they can say something. I know some of you are very, were very close to Mrs. Costa and I'm going to give you a chance to say something real quick before we go into public comment or before we go into recent proclamations. Does anybody have anything to say?
Sure. Yeah, oh, go ahead, Corey, go ahead.
No, I just, real quick, knowing the family for so many years, we would always see Mrs. Costa and, you know, she was always great at every event, every parade. She was always there for not only Jay, but Guy and Paul. She was at almost every event in Swirl Hill throughout the neighborhood. I also do want to say that they, there was a Costa Christmas and Mrs. Costa blamed me for ruining her Christmas for many years because the Greenfield Parade did not have fireworks. And she would stick up for the neighborhood because we could not pull off fireworks one year. So I just remember her always joking around about that for, you know, five or six years since that had occurred, but they were just, she was just such a nice lady. I know Councilwoman Strasburg is something as well, being her neighbor, but just, you saw her at so many events and she was always willing to help and be involved and I think that's great. And obviously the legacy her family's left shows what kind of a person she was. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Yeah, I would just echo those remarks. You know, the word matriarch is perhaps not used as much today as what it might have been in her day, but she truly was the matriarch of that family. And I hate to use the word institution, but she was an institution in and of herself. She was such a force in, in, you know, community and in politics and in, in, in the city. And it shows, her influence shows in the sons that she raised, her family, and what her family has gone on to do in understanding firsthand the importance of service and sacrifice. And that comes from her, you know, to be instilled in her children. She will be missed greatly. I only had the opportunity to meet her a few times, but the times that I, I did and had a little time to spend with her left lasting impressions on me, she will truly, truly be missed. And we wish the Costa family Godspeed.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members?
Yeah, I'll just say that I knew Mrs. Costa before I even got involved in city government. We were neighbors. We shared a driveway for 10 years and that was just sheer coincidence. She lived in that house for 50 years prior to moving to a different house last year and we moved as well, but for 10 years she baked us Easter bread every Easter and crocheted us the blanket that I brought my son home from the hospital in. I mean, we had a really close relationship. She was such a great neighbor. She was sweet and she hosted these gigantic family gatherings and we were always happy to clear our cars out of the driveway so they could play a rousing game of hockey in her driveway. But it was always great to have the family over and, you know, they would invite us and include us in their family gatherings. And she always had a, she was always famous for having these blow up lawn decorations for every holiday and all of the kids, all of the neighborhood kids would just, you know, wait and see what was coming for the next holiday, especially Halloween. It was just majestic in our house with all of these great decorations. She really went all out. So she was a special person and she, she has a special place in our heart and I just send my, all my strength and love to the Costa family right now.
Thank you. Any other members? I'll just say that we, we absolutely wish our, offer our condolences to the Costa family. If there's anything we can do, we would love to be able to help in any way. Just want to offer our condolences. I think, you know, I'd love to have thanked her for sharing her family with this, with the public for so long. I don't think people realize how much you're away from your families when you, when you are in the public service and you are an elected official. And I think that she had so many in her own family. My mother and my family have a hard time just not seeing me on certain, on certain events and certain things. I can't imagine that many children, but she's raised a successful family who's given a lot to the city of Pittsburgh and I want to thank her for that and offer our condolences to the family. And as well to Controller Lamb and, I'm sorry.
We have a mic.
With that said, our next order of business is the presentation of proclamations, I'm sorry. We have one to be read into the record from Councilman Burgess and two from Councilman O'Connor.
Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 738. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby commend the Western Pennsylvania Diaper Bank for their vision of communities where all families have an equal opportunity to thrive and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare the week of September 24th through the 30th of 2020 to be National Diaper Need Awareness Week in the city of Pittsburgh. Councilman Corey O'Connor presents Bill Number 739. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize the life and legacy of Kenneth Kenny Charles Robinson and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, September 26, 2020 to be Kenny Robinson Day in the city of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 740. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize, commend, and congratulate Richard A. Stewart Jr. for receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award for exemplary public service from Nobby Christian Ministries for his extraordinary body of work as an outstanding professional and a dedicated role model in the service of his community.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Second? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved or approved. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters and of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. May we have the first speaker, please? Please state your name and neighborhood for the record and you will have three minutes to speak. First speaker is Steve Stamey.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Stamey and I have lived in the Friendship area for 39 years. When I moved here, it was all crack houses and whorehouses. Many people moved here and helped clean up the area and clean up the crime, the filth, and the graffiti. People did the work it takes to make and change an area of Pittsburgh for the better. We put in stop signs where there were none. We fixed the streetlights, trimmed bushes and trees, and now it is a well-lit, safe place to live. We worked with the city and our councilman at the time, Bill Paduto, hi, Bill, to widen the streets and intersections where possible. There's not been an accident at this intersection for over 30 years, when they used to occur daily. Did anyone bother to ask the people living at this intersection if we want 50-foot painted clowns and balloons painted on the intersection? The other alternative was a 50-foot picture of Christ coming out of the ground. If that isn't frightening, I don't know what is. Yes preacher, he was white. Did you bother to ask or mention that this plan has been in the works for nine months and nobody told the homeowners who live here? What is being proposed is nothing more than graffiti. There's no such thing as asphalt art. The money, the $25,000 to $75,000 that the city will have to spend is wasted funds. Your proposed traffic changes are ridiculous and dangerous and will eliminate most, much of the existing parking. Our school buses, EMS trucks, fire trucks, ambulances, and so on, able to get up there. What about access to all these delivery trucks approved recently by the city? The roads are narrow for normal traffic, but they're with parked cars. City Council has approved three new apartment houses that don't have any parking, so our place over here will be inundated with parking. The, all the, half of the parking has been removed from all these and they will end up parking in Friendship in my neighborhood. It is a stupid idea. It is a stupid idea to stupid uninformed people that do not live here. This is not a canvas for art. This is my home. Please cheapen up your own neighborhood and leave us alone. The second thing I wish to say is that there is no recourse to contest any traffic tickets or parking tickets in the city, which is illegal. The only thing you can do is call a computer number and leave a message. It is, yet people down in Oakland, which is like a ghost town now, are passing out parking tickets like lettuce, even though there is no way to contest them. It is illegal and immoral.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikawana Mel Makini, Makina.
Good morning.
Can I be heard? Can you hear me?
I can.
Thank you. Greetings of peace, light, and love. My title is Ikawana Howe Makina. I am from the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. I am the matriarch for our nation. We are one nation, many people, many people, one nation. I am here to revive our culture, to implement sustainable, meaningful programs that will ensure and allow our people to rise once again, to uplift our people, to repair broken homes, to redress the institutional miseducation of our children who do not know that they are indigenous too, to give equitable jobs and fair health care and the redistribution of the land and resources that you now call Pittsburgh. You've titled our, retitled our lands, our streets, our roads, to rename them to colonizers, colonizers who came here to take over the indigenous land of the indigenous people. If you read Arnoldist Montana, you will see, you will see us living. There's pictures in the Arnoldist Montana. These documents are available in the Library of Congress, to which, where I study a lot and I've gotten a lot of this information, you see. We must ensure that the people know who they are so they can live upright and you must fairly distribute the resources and economic value to these people who are the indigenous people of the land. We know who we are. We are not going away. We will continue to speak our truth, even if our voices shake. We have a government-to-government relationship with the United States and its subsidiaries as set forth in Article 1, Section 2, Clause 3 of the Constitution, which states Indians not tax. We are here to ensure that international, federal, state, and local governments and corporate entities take measures to ensure these rights are not violated. It is a duty for us to report you when they are not honored, when these treaties are not honored. We are here to obtain justice and redress and remedy for all the violations, for the long usurpations of our land and our resources, whereas we, the people, shall implement and enable and support the success of our safe survival and of our prosperity as Aboriginal Indigenous Americans. We employ that the city of Pittsburgh, via the Mayor, who has taken over our land and is attempting to ignore us on a regular basis, we will be heard and we will reign once again in our land. So it's up to you, city council, who controls him. It's up to you to continue to put us.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Koda Unki Bay.
I'm Cody Key Bay of the Iroquois Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And definitely there needs to be an acknowledgement of the Aboriginal peoples of the land, especially in the land that they call Pennsylvania, which historically was a part of the Delawares, the treaty with the Delawares in 1778, which included the region of Pennsylvania, New York, and New Jersey. And one of the first treaties, the treaty with the Delaware, right here at Fort Pitt, which is known as the Fort Pitt Treaty, and those treaties were just for the forts and safe passages through, as well as our ancestors helped the budding fledgling United States of America in their war against the British back at that time. And all the way to present date, that debt obligation is still outstanding via House Congress Resolution 331. All city members, city council members within the municipality of Pittsburgh took an oath and affirmation to support, protect, and defend the Constitution for the United States of America prior to you guys having your positions, your jobs, and fulfilling the role as is outlined in not only the Pennsylvania State Constitution, but as it lies in the Home Rule Charter. And us as Aboriginal people, we need to have a meeting with the city council members, a private meeting with the city council members, the Mayor, and other members to move forward on our government-to-government relationship. If anyone should have a priority in America, it is the indigenous peoples. It's not the socio-political constructs nor the citizens who are the most part immigrants to our land exploiting not only our land, our people. So we have to have that meeting and that, we have to have that meeting soon. We have sent out documentations, so we would love to hear response, one way or the other. But definitely this meeting and several meetings have to happen so we can restore, revive our communities and our land. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good day. There being no further speakers, we'll move on to the next order of business and it will be the presentation of papers. Councilman Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Cockhill, Chair of Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Cockhill presents Bill Number 730. Resolution approving the recommendation made by the Department, the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that Mulberry Way be paved with asphalt in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number 731. Resolution granting unto the Brashear Association their successors and assigns the license and privilege to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense to install a new subsurface water meter vault for new domestic and fire service at 314 Brownsville Road, 30th Ward, 3rd Council District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources. Your microphone's off, Councilman.
I'm sorry. Good morning, Madam President. Thank you. I have two new papers.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number 732. Resolution providing for a professional service agreement with Big Picture Lab LLC for video production services in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Of the total cost, $12,500 will come from the HUD Trust Fund and $12,500 will come from the Commission's Community Development Block Grant Funding. Bill Number 736. Amending Resolution Number 549, which authorized the Mayor and Director of Public Works to enter into an agreement between the city and the Pittsburgh Downtown Partnership for services rendered by Clean Team ambassadors within the South Side P E D by extending the contract for a term of two years at an annual cost not to exceed $150,000.
Thank you. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 733. Amending Resolution 838, which authorized the Mayor and Chief Equity Officer to execute relevant agreements with neighborhood allies to implement the creation of financial empowerment centers within the city by adding four additional years and increasing funding to offer the service through 2023 at a cost not to exceed $150,000. Bill Number 734. Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into an agreement with the Allegheny County Bar Association to provide legal advertising to the city for performing state mandated advertising of treasurer's sales.
Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 735. Amending Resolution Number 246, which had previously amended Resolution Number 493 and Resolution Number 133, authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into a third amended professional services agreement with Johnson Controls for Continued Security Camera Integration and Support Services at a cost of $587,400, extending such agreement for one year and increasing the overall agreement compensation to $5,690,002.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman. Thank you.
Good morning.
Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Myself, I have one communications. Madam Clerk.
Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 737. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting the City of Pittsburgh Quarterly Financial and Performance Report for the period ending June 30th, 2020.
We have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And our next order of business is reported committee for final action. Councilman Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 724. Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for September 16, 2020, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 677. Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Ceci Portuguese and her attorneys in the amount of $105,000 related to the full and final settlement of an eminent domain case filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas by the city. Bill Number 678. Resolution authorizing eight open-end professional services agreement with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required, related to the assessment, design, construction, and maintenance of the city's infrastructure buildings and land as needed by various departments of the city. Each agreement being at an amount not to exceed $2,500,000 annually for a two-year term with up to two additional one-year options and providing for funding of the costs thereof. Bill Number 679. Resolving non-open-end professional services agreement with multiple vendors to provide professional services for construction management and construction inspection on an on-call basis as required, related to the assessment, design... Inspection On An On-Call Basis As Required Related To The Assessment, Design, Construction, And Maintenance Of The City's Infrastructure Buildings And Lands As Needed By Various Departments Of The City. Each Agreement Being At An Amount Not To Exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually For A Two-Year Term With Up To Two Additional One-Year Options And Providing For Funding Of The Costs Thereof. Bill Number six eighty, Resolution Authorizing The Mayor And Director Of The Office Of Management And Budget To Enter Into An Agreement With The University Of Pittsburgh Small Business Development Center For Training Of Consultants With And Promotion Of A Curriculum Aim At Developing Skills For Small Business Owners Who Do Not Yet Do Business With The City As Part Of The City's Required Deliverables For Our Living City's Grant. The Total Cost Not To Exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage of the bill, the bills, or the I when your name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Reverend Burgess, what was your vote?
Aye. I couldn't, sorry, I couldn't unmute myself fast enough.
Okay. Eyes nine, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilman Corey O'Connor, Committee Of Public Safety Services.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman O'Connor Presents Bill Number seven twenty-five, Reporter Of The Committee On Public Safety Services For September sixteen, two thousand twenty, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number six forty-seven, Ordinance Amendment And Supplement In The Pittsburgh Code Of Ordinances At Title One Administrative Article Three, Organization Chapter one sixteen, Department Of Public Safety To Regulate The Use Of Facial Recognition And Predictive Policing Technology. Bill Number seven twenty-six. I'm sorry, that's it.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes. Councilwoman Strasburger worked on amendments over the weekend. We also heard from Councilmember Wilson last night for some technical changes. So I would like to make the amendments got to you this morning. There was a last-minute one. But again, they're all clarifying through the law department and taking out some additional language. So I would just like to make a motion to amend.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Just very brief, just brief discussion. If the council could just walk us through the amendments, please?
Yes. I, Councilwoman Strasburger, I don't know if you wanted to add anything because you co-sponsored, but it's basically taking out some clarifying language. And then there was a technical one that had to do with legal ease that was deleted, Section D one. So we just deleted that. I don't, I don't know who that was, but they want to jump in, no problem. So I don't know if Councilwoman Strasburger, you wanted to add anything? We did work with Chief Gilman as well over the last couple of days, so.
Sure. So the, the section that I recommended deleting, if this is going to go through a future council, whether that's six months from now, or whether, you know, council would be considering this kind of acquisition of this technology ten years in the future, the original language had some parameters that we had to, that were put around the council as to like what criteria we had to consider. It said that we had to base our decision, our future decision, off of it being, you know, not perpetuating bias, posing no risk to civil rights and liberties of residents. And that's all correct, and I think things that we'd want to consider, but actually putting that down in, in, in the language in the bill, according to our lawyers, is putting kind of unnecessary parameters around a future decision. So that was the only reason I kind of suggested to remove it, and in listening to our lawyers and Councilman O'Connor, you know, agree with me, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for, for helping out on that, as well as Councilman Wilson, that we spoke last night as well. So thank you, everybody. That's nothing further for me.
Any other members? Seeing none? No other members? Let me make sure it's Mike's show. The bill's not ready for final action? All in favor?
No, no, it's not.
Yeah, we need to take a vote on the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Any abstentions? No, the bill's not ready for final action. Any comments, any questions, comments from?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
So I will reiterate, back when Councilman Dow and I first came, we would label bills like this Pinocchio bills, right? Bills that are not real boys, bills that don't do anything. I am against predictive policing. This bill does not stop predictive policing. I believe that facial recognition should only be used in felonies. This does not stop facial recognition. Right now, today, the city of Pittsburgh is using facial recognition through the state of Pennsylvania, and we have no control over it whatsoever. This bill does not stop it. In fact, it has a poison pill, part of the legislation that says that it doesn't apply to us using software produced or shared by other police departments. And there are a hundred police departments in Allegheny County, not including the state, the federal, you get the idea. This is a bill simply for window dressing, and this is not the time for that. This has been done for many centuries to African-Americans, you know? You say, you wink, nod, nod, we're going to do something for you, and then we don't really do anything. We say we're going to do something for you, we have a big press conference, we give you a couple hundred dollars in grant money, but then for real, you spend billions of dollars to do real stuff in majority communities. And the time for that is past. These kind of bills, when they hit the table, I will expose them for the fraud in which they are. Now, the other thing, though, this has a harm. And here's the harm to this. If you read the rules of council, we're actually not supposed to introduce legislation on the same topic in the same session. So that if a year from now, or six months from now, we actually wanted to do something serious about police, about predictive policing or facial recognition, we're actually prohibited from doing it because we pretended to do something now. And so I, I'm not going to vote against it because it's irrelevant. But I want to say, this is the kind of legislation in these times we absolutely should not be doing. These are Pinocchio bills. This is, I want to do something because the time calls for it, but I really don't want to do anything serious because I don't want anybody to be mad at me. This, and then, you know, of course, there's the separation of powers thing, which we cannot tell the police. I've written more legislation about public safety than anyone else, almost more than everyone combined. And I know the limits of what you can do. The reason I work with the police is because the council is prohibited of forcing them to do things. We have to do it in concert with them. And that's why this has been so watered down to make it irrelevant. This is an irrelevant piece of legislation. It suits no purpose, and it has no meaning.
Any other members? Are there any other members? So I'm just going to say that I have asked council members to stop putting in legislation until we have a chance to work together and work through a lot of things. And I think that we really, and I still see members sending things over, I still see people saying that they're working on things, but we're still not working together. We're talking to different members here and there, but we're not working together. I think that this week we'll make sure that I put something together that we can start working together. I'm not going to vote for any legislation that comes through piecemeal like this, you know, anymore. I think that part of what makes me angry is that everybody's worried about, I realize, so, you know, election times are coming, and everybody's worried about their, their personal agendas and their personal selves. And I get that. I mean, I definitely get that. But, and I'm not saying that this is that case. I'm saying that everybody's, everybody has to do what they have to do for their, for themselves and for their constituency. But I think that we, an issue this serious deserves us working together and working with the Public Safety Department and working with those people who even oppose a lot of the things that the Police Department are doing. So even protesters and other people, I think that we all need to sit down together. And it's difficult to do when you're not sure who all the different people are organizing different, different protests now, because there are so many, there are so many different, different groups. But I think that there's a way that we can, we can figure that out and bring everyone together. So for me, I just, I'm going to say from, from now on, I mean, I'm really looking into seeing what I can do to stop some of this stuff, because I think that, that we're all being very reactionary. And we're all, if we really thought that this is the right way to do it, we'd do it after an election, too. And so, I mean, not just, you know, leading up to an election. And we'd actually make it really that it's going, something that actually is going to make a difference in people's lives. And I think that, as I've mentioned with, with all the legislations that I've seen coming forward, there's very, Reverend Burgess mentioned, there's very little that we, we have done with, with all the legislation, not just this legislation, but a lot of the legislation. And I think it's better for us to look at it all as a comprehensive change in policy with the, with the whole, with the whole department. I think we need to talk with the director at the table and the chief and, and others who, who are actually on the ground doing the job. So I think that, for me, I, I'm not sure even how I'm going to vote today, because I mean, I, I understand the facial recognition part, I really don't like it. I mean, I, I personally don't like that, the use of that. But I've also heard reasons why, that that's just one part of the tool that they use. And so, that's it for me. Any other comments?
Madam President?
Yes, Councilman Coghill, and then I think it's also Councilman Gross.
I just wanted to comment, I, I've kind of been on the road for the last three weeks, and I want to apologize to Councilman O'Connor, because I really am not up to speed on the amendments and all that was involved, and I didn't have the right conversations. Therefore, I'm uncomfortable voting yes or no on it today, so I will be abstaining. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm, I'm comfortable voting for this today. I hear what other members are saying, but, and it's, it's, you know, a little bit true all the way around, but sometimes it's better not to wait, and just to get started. And also, sometimes trying to get things perfect is the enemy of the good. And the citizens may decide that this legislation is not strong enough, and we always have the ability to revise it and amend. We can get started today and improve upon it. And certainly, there can be other pieces, some of which we work on collectively, some of which we don't. Some people will say that it's because we worked with public safety that this piece is weaker than it should be. So yes, there are going to be a lot of opinions and, but it's, it's, I think what we should not do is dither too much, right? I mean, if we kind of step back from public conversation to work with the administration and with each other, then we've taken that conversation out of the public conversation. And the people, I think, are very clear that they want to participate. So I, I'm happy to vote for this today. We may continue to talk about this topic. And so I want to say thank you to the council members who, who really dug in and worked with Councilman O'Connor to get us to this point. So I'm happy to vote for it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members? And I'm just going to say, again, that I think that we need to work comprehensively. And, and you're talking about making the bill stronger. There may be people that want to make it less, in council, less involved, because I think that as we get into some of this stuff, start realizing, realizing why some of the things that we're doing, you know, and the Police Department, why they're doing some of those things, and, and why we can't change some things. And I just want to say, I'm not anti-police, and I think that there's this whole sentiment right now, even if with council members. I'm not anti-police at all. Actually, I actually support our police. But I am, I am absolutely opposed to any type of brutality. And, and I just, and I want to say that, and I do think that there's things that we can do, and I think that there's people in the department that have really good suggestions on how to do things a little bit differently and, and better, too. And those are the people that are actually working the streets sometimes. And we don't always include them in our conversations either. So I just want to say, I mean, we, we do have a Police Department that is extremely highly trained, and I think that there's a mayor that, that has set a, has, has made his comments that he wants a Police Department that's, works better with the people and, and is, has a real focus on police community relations. So I want to say that, because I think that there's been a lot happening in that area. And I want to say that I'm not anti-police, but I am anti-brutality. And I think that I'd like to see that council members realize that these are our employees in, and these are our constituents, and there's got to be a way for us as leaders to bring people together and work for the betterment of everyone. So with that said, the, no further comment, there's, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill? We'll vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Please, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
I'm staying.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes eight, one abstention.
Thank you. The bill haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Now that moves us on to Councilman Coghill's Committee On Public, Public Works. Councilman Coghill?
Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Coghill Presents Bill Number seven twenty-six, Reporter Of The Committee On Public Works For September sixteen, two thousand twenty, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number seven oh seven, Resolution Approving The Recommendation Made By The Department, The Director Of The Department Of Mobility And Infrastructure At Brighton Woods Road Be Paid With Asphalt In accordance With The Pittsburgh Code Of Ordinances.
Motion to approve.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills.
You have been away a while, huh?
Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none? The bill's not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill? Vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Oops, sorry. I, I thought that was unmuted. Got it now.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
Bill hasn't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilmember Bruce Kraus Committee On Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus Presents Bill Number seven twenty-seven, Reporter Of The Committee On Human Resources For September sixteen, two thousand twenty, Within An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number six seventy-five, Resolution Providing For The Filing Of Applications By The Commonwealth Of Pennsylvania Department Of Human Services For Grants In Connection With The Joint Job Initiative Program Employment Advancement And Retention Network And Providing For The Authorization To Enter Into Agreements With Various Agencies And To Pay For Expenditures Or Costs To Support, Implement, And Administer The Program. Cost Not To Exceed three million eight hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing none? Bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the, aye when their name is called? Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Ms. Lavelle.
They're saying bye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes, are finally passed. Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Committee On Innovate, Innovation, Performance And Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Strasburger Presents Bill Number seven twenty-eight, Reporter Of The Committee On Innovation, Performance And Assets Management For September sixteen, two thousand twenty, With An Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Number six sixty-one, Resolution, Amending Resolution seven thirty-eight, seven thirty-eight, Which Provided For A Professional Services Agreement With NCR Corporation To Provide Citywide Credit, Debit, And E-Check Payment Services For The Collection Of Various Programs And Permitting Fees For The City By Exercising The Option To Extend The Term Of The Agreement by exercising the option to extend the term of the agreement for one year at no additional cost and updating the name of the vendor.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing then, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, Councilwoman Deb Gross Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 729, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for September 16, 2020, with affirmative recommendation, Bill Number 681, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for North Nagley Residence at 327 North Nagley Avenue. Bill Number 689, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 768, which authorized a corporation agreement between the city and the URA to divert 75% of the incremental parking taxes from the garage, up to a maximum of $10 million to fund affordable housing at the proposed city's edge development in the uptown neighborhood of the city by adding language that would also allow for the funding of infrastructure, public space improvements, and a combined 508 space parking structure on site, as well as reducing the amount of proposed affordable housing units from 77 to 63.
Heard the reading of the title of the bills. Any discussion on the bills? Seeing then, the bills are now ready for final action. All in favor of, either the name is called, those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the rule.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for all the, both, both of you for all the reading. Um, now we move on to motions and resolutions, and I have some meeting announcements, and then we'll hear from members. This afternoon at 1:00 PM, a Cablecast Post Agenda Roundtable Discussion is scheduled relative to community and occupational lead hazards. As there are no public comments taken at a post agenda, there, let me put my glasses on. You may watch via live stream, the meeting, or on the City Channel's YouTube channel. And I want to say that that's the meeting, it will be chaired by Councilman, um, O'Connor. And tomorrow morning, Wednesday, September 23rd, at 10:00 AM, council will meet for the standing committees meeting. To register at, to speak at this meeting, please call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138 by 9:00 AM Wednesday morning. And that meeting will be chaired by Councilman Lavelle. Also tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 PM, a Cablecast Public Hearing is scheduled via, via the Zoom platform on Bill 645, relative to his, in historic designation of the Shrine of the Blessed Mother. To register for this public hearing, please call the clerk's office by 11:30 AM on September 23rd. You may also submit written comment via the email, via email to the cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov. And I will say that that public hearing will be chaired by Councilman Kraus. And next Wednesday, September 30th, at 2:00 PM, a Cablecast Public Hearing is scheduled via the Zoom platform on Bill 198, as it relates to amending and supplementing the zoning code to eliminate minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings. And I'm not sure if anybody wants to chair that one or not. I think that's, oh, Councilman Wilson, I think you're chairing that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So do we have anything from members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
So, um, I want to speak, now that we've disposed of that foolishness, I want to dispose, I want to speak about the larger subject. Um, I have been working on public safety since my early days on council. And we have successfully changed, I believe, the culture, the membership, and the practices of the police. I have the highest, the highest respect for Director Hisrich and for Chief Schubert. I believe, and I want to be on the record to say this, so there is no doubt, I believe we have one of the finest, best-trained police forces in the country. I spent almost a year and a half on one piece of legislation, meeting with the police weekly a few years ago in order to pass it. In order to do police reform, it takes patience, it takes a willingness to hear all sides. Now, we're at this time, and the reason we're, it's the problem with, with the nation, specifically in Pittsburgh, is not our police force. We're talking about the nature of policing. It is not that our police force is bad. Our police force is excellent. The problem we have is that we're reimagining what police would look like. Because across the nation, police forces have been doing violence against black and brown people. And so when we reimagine what police looks like, and some of us think that's a smaller police force and more social services, a couple of things I think are really important. First of all, it cannot, and I think the President's right about this, it cannot be done, um, without a big table of all of us talking together. Second of all, since this moment is being led by the mistreatment of black and brown people, black and brown people have to also be at the forefront of leadership in this issue. It is not, the fear and the talk happens to black people, the talk, I had to have that with my sons, um, when they learn to drive and, and, and talk to them. Um, and I have experienced that on a personal level. And so, um, we're going to now have this very difficult conversation, um, in twofold, really. One, because we have less money, right? We're going to have to make budget cuts, so that's going to affect the police. And then second of all, we have to reimagine police. Again, it's not that our police is bad. In fact, our police is very good. I, I would stand up, I would compare the Pittsburgh Public Police, Pittsburgh Bureau of Police, to any police department in the country in terms of its training and its professionalism at this state. But we're talking generally about changing the nature of police, which means less police, more social services, smarter, more nimble, more effective police as an entity. Not that that police is bad, they're actually pretty good. It's just that we want to change the nature of policing. So that's the emphasis on what policing looks like. And I look forward, I have, I am, I'm grateful, I want to make it very clear, that the things I've been able to do has not been because I'm so smart, it's because the Director Hisrich and Chief Schubert and former public safety directors and former chiefs of police have been willing to work with me for the good of the people. And I intend to continue to work with them hand in glove, so that we can get to this moment, to a place where all of us, and the last thing is, um, and I, I want to make it very clear, black people, African Americans, need the police. We support the police, right? If you're living in African-American communities, uh, some of them that have high levels of crime and violence, you too want and support the police. So we are, we are not trying to, to abolish the police in any way. What we are trying to do is to feel safe from police violence and to reimagine what policing looks like. And I do look forward to working with everyone, um, all stakeholders, you know, the activists, African-Americans, members of council, um, the mayor, the mayor's administration, Director, Director Hisrich and his staff, Chief Schubert and his staff. Because this is the, this is one of the issues of our time. Police reform is something that we will do together, um, and primarily, I believe, in many ways led by black and brown people, but we will do it together. Because really, it is when we're, we're all safe, when everybody is safe. And so the idea is for us to all feel safe together. Thank you for that moment, but I wanted to clarify my intentions, how I proceed, and what I'm trying to do.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? Any other members? Councilwoman Strasburger.
I wasn't going to speak, but I think I want to use this as an opportunity to agree with the sentiment that we do need to work together as much as we possibly can. And that a piecemeal approach is just not going to be helpful for us, or for the public at large, or for the people that we're intending to help and address. Um, and in that spirit, I, I've sent each council member and, and some members of the public and some other elected officials and have put it out there, started to put it there, not quietly, but, you know, I haven't blasted it out. Um, it's on our website, it's a, it's a six-page kind of catch-all policy document. It does, it does editorialize, it puts my statement on reimagining public safety in there. But the other parts of it are really just the facts of what has been discussed at all levels of government in terms of reimagining what policing and public safety can look like. What we've done on council, what we could do on council, what the county could do, what the school board could do, what the state could do, what the federal government can do. And I put it out there intentionally as a draft because I want feedback. I want feedback from, from all of you, from council members, from the public at large, from thought leaders. Um, I know that you put something out and you get criticism, and I want that criticism, I want that critical feedback. And I hope that it can be a document that helps to pull all of our thoughts together and can help to organize our thoughts and our intentions so that we can all work as, as a body to advance what we want to advance. Understanding that not everyone will agree on every, on every bill or every aspect of it. Um, but that was my intention.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? I'm just going to just reiterate with something you said, Reverend Burgess, when we started going down this road and people started hearing about defunding the police and changing the police, what I heard from was from my African-American communities and residents, and I only have one community, but I've heard that, as of the neighborhoods, it's predominantly African-American, but I've heard from the residents, that if we think that it's okay to take police out of their neighborhoods, come live there for a week. Come live there, come walk the streets, come stay there. And they're actually getting kind of fed up of seeing a lot of my white colleagues coming forward with legislation. They really don't think that they understand, they really think that they, think that they're speaking for them instead of listening to them and allowing them to speak for themselves. Because they, they don't need our permission to, to tell us what, what's going on. And they feel like sometimes we're putting things forward to do that. So I just want to be very clear that, and my, my constituency for the majority of the people I'm hearing from in the African-American community are not real pleased with us at all with anything we're doing. And they also think that we are piecemealing things together. And they, it's not, they absolutely want to see an end to police brutality. But they also acknowledge that they do a lot of work with our Pittsburgh police in our neighborhoods. And there's, there are some people that have some bad, really bad experiences with our police officers. And there's some that have really good experiences. And so I think that they want us to have them at the table and not, um, and I think that they would actually like for this to be led more from the African-American community from what I'm, I'm hearing. So with that said, I just, because I think they really know the reality of, of, of the neighborhoods they're living. It depends on, on what neighborhood, depends on what situation. As I mentioned, in Short Hills City, it's one of the lowest, my predominantly African-American community neighborhood, and it has the lowest crime, one of the lowest crimes and highest homeownership. It's just, it's one of those neighborhoods that defies all odds. And, um, I think that they just do an amazing job. We can learn a lot from them as well. So with that said, if there's nothing else from members.
Madam President.
Yes.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to comment, Reverend Burgess, uh, it's refreshing to hear you say how you feel about the Pittsburgh police force. I don't hear enough of it from this council, I will tell you. And, um, you know, it starts with respect. It starts with respecting the job that they do. It starts with respecting that they're our neighbors and they're our friends. And I don't believe we can do anything without them, without their input. So I believe they have to be at the table. And Madam President and I have spoken, you know, in depth about this, and I believe she feels the same way. I don't want to speak for her. But, um, you know, I look forward to these talks. And I just wanted to comment, Reverend Burgess, it's, it's refreshing to hear you, um, you know, your views on our police department, because I also believe that they're one of the best police departments in the country. And, um, I think if you look at the past and other cities, we have an impeccable record, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members? And I do want to say, I, I, Councilman Coghill, I, I don't want to pretend that there aren't issues. There are definitely issues that we definitely need to address. And I think even our, um, police department will say that, and, and our public safety folks will say that. But I, I think that the way that we're going about it is what's making people frustrated and angry. We're not, um, some of the other cities that were seeing some of the, some horrific things. And that doesn't mean that something can't happen here in Pittsburgh. And so we really want to avoid that happening here in Pittsburgh, those kinds of things happening here in Pittsburgh. So I think that's, that's the bigger picture here, and changing the policing isn't going to happen with, you know, pieces of legislation coming forward. But I do want to say, I think that some of our colleagues are trying to do what they think is best too. And we just may, may disagree on, on how to get there. But I think at the end, we want, um, people to feel safe in the community. We want, um, we want, would like to see some policing changing, um, the idea of policing changing. So with that said, if there's nothing else from, please have, uh, a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.